Good evening. I'd like to call together this regular meeting of the King George County Board of Supervisors. We'd like to start out this evening with invocation by Mr. Granger and the following pledge of allegiance by Mr. Miller. Y'all please stand. Thank you, Mr. Granger. Thank you, everyone. It started, Mr. Miller, any amendments to the agenda tonight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I believe you have a need to amend the agenda to have a closed session.
Move to amend the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Okay, I'd like to open the floor up to public comment at this point. Public comments will be limited to three minutes per person in order to every, to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. If comments relate to a specific public hearing item, we ask that you offer those comments at the time of the public hearing. Mr. Lynch?
Evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I am here with a couple items about the railroad trail. Surprise, surprise. As you know, our premier race for the year is upcoming this weekend, ultra marathon this year, changing around a little bit. We are going to, we are, we are going to start and end the race at Dogren with the obje- excuse me, with the objective of highlighting our hotels, restaurants, and other businesses in the commercial area. We are real pleased that the Holiday Inn Express is our host hotel. We also have, and this is real interesting news, the National Park Service has appointed a superintendent for the Potomac Heritage National Scenic Trail. As you're probably aware, ever since Mr. Briggs retired quite a while ago, we either haven't had a superintendent or we've had acting, acting superintendents. The new person is named Jerry DeYoung, and she will actually be on the trail next Tuesday. It would be great, you know, if any of you all are able to come out and introduce yourself to her. I would also like to encourage everybody to support the resolution pertaining to the suitability study that Mr. Clark will introduce later in the evening. And I'd also like to quickly point out that Little Art Church has obtained a handsome grant that will support a number of projects, including having the trail relocated off of their property. Mr. Chairman, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Anyone else for general public, public comment? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Dines, anyone online? Board, anybody get any emails or anything that need to be read in? Nope. Okay. Then at that point, we will close public comment and get on to reports of members of the board. Mrs. Binder?
Thank you very much. I want to thank Mr. Lynch. He is always a big supporter of the trails. Thank you for coming and giving us some updates. Seeing the rough bunch alumni folks in the audience, thank you for coming. We had a couple of our subcommittee meetings this week, very productive conversation and moving forward. And I'm making this short here because I want to get to where I was today in Richmond for our latest meeting for the HB 206 rap, where we talked about solar panels and mediation. And one of the thing, couple of updates I wanted to bring back, I really pushed for the local government having a say earlier in the process of permitting and site suitability so that we get more information upfront so that we can have a better conversation, especially for our citizens, about solar companies or any renewable energy companies that are coming to, into our county and want to grab up farmland or forested land because that's the big thing. And that maybe in our new comprehensive plan, which we kind of have, we have to do in a year because it's five years, so 2019, well, one or two years, sorry, got my dates a little off. But we're going to have to update our comp plan. So there are new mapping that we probably are going to need to do, like one of them being mapping of prime farmland and of prime forestry land as part of our comp plan and being more diligent about our comp plan and showing where we want certain industries or to locate so that it's more as an agreement on where, an example, solar panels would be allowed in the community. It makes it easier for everyone involved, less controversy. One other thing that, especially the local government's push, is having the resources available to the localities from a state perspective. And we really hammered that home that is very important, especially with our smaller localities that don't have as many resources, having someone we could talk to at the state that will give us resources that we can be educated citizens in making these votes for our other citizens that we represent. And believe it or not, the developers were open to that idea and they understand the challenges we have with that. And that's all I have. I just got back for it. So I have lots of notes, but I was just giving you a quick summary. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Binder. Mr. Granger?
Yes, sir. First of all, Mr. Lynch, thank you for your comments. I got your email as well yesterday. But for the program updates about the Dogren Railroad Heritage Trail, the new superintendent and all that, the activities going on with that, I know you're a great advocate for it. So I really appreciate you coming out and speaking and providing that information. Thank you, sir. Other than that, the only thing I have is this past Tuesday, July 26, I did attend the meeting for the discussion of the courthouse and moving forward with that project. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. Mrs. Cupka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. And Mr. Lynch, in particular, thank you for providing your comment and your advocacy for the trail. Wednesday, July 20, I attended the Rock the Rescue event at Ricks on the River. King George Fire Rescue was able to put the new boat into use out in the water and do some rescue training. It was very impressive. And there was a complimentary article in the newspaper about the event. I want to thank everyone who made this training happen. I'm going to skip down. Thursday, July 28, I attended the Rappahannock Regional Jail Board of Directors meeting. I want to make everyone aware, the General Assembly commissioned a study, Senate Bill 581, of the fees charged to inmates due to be completed by December 1, 2022. So how could this impact us as a locality? Well, if these fees are abolished, some of the services provided to inmates would need to be, might need to be eliminated because there would not be funding for them, such as tablets. Tablets are kind of a nicety. You know, they have access to a telephone. They get charged a fee to enable them to use a tablet. So that's a special service that, right now, all of the funding that inmates pay in has to go to the commissary. So basically, the revenue has to go back to the inmates. So other, some other fees go to the general fund. And if those fees are ruled to be eliminated and absent new state funding, the local jail boards might have to look to the member localities, such as ourselves, to increase our local contributions to run the jail. So I suggested the jail staff draft a letter describing the fiscal impacts this could have on the member localities for forwarding to the members of the commission performing this study, as well as our representatives in Richmond. So when it is ready, I will bring it forward to this board for approval. I just want to make everyone aware. So we're tracking that there could be some fiscal impacts if the General Assembly finds it necessary to move forward with that. And then that evening, I attended a Dogren Heritage Foundation program at UMW Dogren Campus regarding their new exhibit featuring the work of Doctors Ira and Gladys West. Saturday, July 30, I want to thank all of the organizations that participated in Agency Day at King George Elementary School, and special thanks to Impact King George for organizing it. Today, I stopped by National Night Out on my way here for just a few minutes because I had a service authority meeting at 5:30. It looked like a great event. And I'm glad to see our public safety and some of our service agencies and all of our community coming out to support getting out into the community. It was pretty full when I left. It's hard to find a parking space. So I want to congratulate King George Fire Rescue and Emergency Services for their recognition on July 27 as the Rappahannock EMS Council's Outstanding EMS Agency of the Year. Our department competed against all of Planning District 9, which is out Northern Virginia Way, and Planning District 16 for this recognition. And we are now on to the state-level competition for possible recognition by the governor. Congratulations also to Lieutenant Matthew Russell for his recognition himself as the Outstanding Pre-Hospital Educator Award. And we have a couple of vacancies on the Rappahannock Area Community Services Board. I move to appoint Mrs. Sarah Ritchie to the open term that previously expired on June 30, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes.
That concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Cupka. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Lynch, thanks for coming out. Thanks for sending me the email. And I sent back to you what a concern would be with the trail. And we'll look forward to those coming up in the planning commission as we go forth. I'd like to reiterate Mr. Granger's, the school's opening next week. Be safe in your travels and school bus stops. And we have more children and more traffic. So everyone, please be careful. I will have a vacancy on the planning commission if anybody has an interest. The last thing is the to-do list. I was wondering where we were at with that.
I was going to provide an update as part of my county administrative report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Mr. Lynch, thanks for coming out. No surprise, we were talking about trail stuff. That's all very good news. And looking, looking forward to see what MPS does and this new person. You said it was a Jerry DeLong, I guess? Okay, gotcha. All right, thank you. So this week I had a couple of phone calls again with Verizon. I don't, seems to be getting even worse and worse. I don't, I don't know. And I just, I've gotten nowhere. We might, you know, might have to move up to kind of a federal level. I don't know. I just, every time I talk to somebody, well, one, my phone drops out. I can't continue my conversation again. And I've even tried trying on the landline and still just really getting no answers from anybody. But I'm still working on that. Also, I've talked to Breeze Line, had a number of complaints about folks losing signal on Breeze Line as well. They were doing really great. And I think they're kind of slacking off a little bit, but we'll see what we can do with that. And just to follow up, I sent an email to all of you guys about seeing if we can get Sheriff Giles and somebody from Judy Hart's office in the Commission of Revenues to come once a month to do a report, give us a report on enforcement and cigarette stuff. And just like to get consensus for Mr. Miller to send a letter to both of those departments requesting that if, you know, somebody from their staff can come, give us an update on the 20th. The 20th is when all the taxes are due, meals tax and cigarette tax and all that kind of stuff. So, you know, the second meeting would probably be a good time to do that. Mr. Miller, could you see that a letter gets sent to both of those offices and request that somebody come and give us a report?
At the next, at the 16th meeting?
Yeah, if they can. But, you know, after that, then maybe the second meeting of the month.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. And then that's all I have. Closing out those. All right, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Moving on, constitutional officer reports. I don't see anyone. Report from the county attorney, Mrs. Lackey.
As I reported at the last meeting, I've circulated draft amendments to the golf cart ordinance and also an ordinance that would implement the proration of personal property taxes for motor vehicles beginning January 1. So I just wanted to mention that in case there was any direction at this time in regard to either of those ordinances.
Mr. Chair, is the Commissioner, will she been involved in this discussion? Because it don't directly affect her?
I'm sorry, Mr. Collins. Who?
Commissioner of Revenue.
All right. Yes, I mean, she should have some insight heard.
I know that the Commissioner of Revenue and Mr. Jones, the Treasurer, have expressed a desire to be a part of any kind of discussions of whatever is put together that Ms. Lackey presents to y'all because of the administration of their, in their offices of prorated or a rebating type of arrangement on the, on the personal property tax. So that's what I think that may, is that what Mr. Collins is talking about?
That's fine.
Can I add one other question to that is, I'm sure all of us have heard from many people about the valuation of the cars. With that also being part of it, could we look at the NAD book and the different valuations? Like the, use it, we use the, what is it called? The clean value? If maybe we use the average value instead of the, not the rough, which is the lowest, but maybe looking at the valuation systems we use in, in the NADA book? Because from my understanding, we use the highest value. And, and what would that as an impact if we went with like the middle? What would that impact be? That would be a question for Ms. Hart and her staff.
Right, that, that's for a determination by Commissioner Hart, but the board could certainly request information on that.
May I, Mr. Chair? So the code of Virginia specifies only two ways that the commissioner can assess the value. So maybe we, I don't know if there is a desire to have a work session with, with the commissioner and the treasurer, and we can talk about what prorating looks like and what impact that would have, and also talk about the valuation. Because I too received a number of complaints about how the, what method is used to assess. And I told all of them, the law says she can do it that way. There are, there are two ways she can do it. And if that's how she chooses to do it, that's how she chooses to do it. So, but with regard to the golf cart ordinance, we've, we've had that circulating for quite a while now. So I would move to direct staff to advertise a public hearing for the first meeting in September.
Second.
So your motion properly seconded. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes on that.
And then the other, the other item I wanted to raise was that I believe that the board is aware that the planning commission is conducting a special meeting on the 17th to consider a rezoning. The applicant has requested that the Board of Supervisors consider a special meeting to consider that rezoning as well. The proposed date is the 24th, but that is subject to the will of the board.
Ken, Mr. Chair? I don't have any problem with the special meetings, except that we're always putting them on Wednesday. And I do attend Bible's topic on Wednesday. And this last budget session, I was unable to attend any. So I would request that it be Tuesday, Monday, Thursday, or Friday, not Wednesday.
I think, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Collins, the reason that we had requested, I understand your, your situation and respect, respect that. The reason that we had to do it on the 24th, or at least propose it on the 24th, it could be a later date, but you can't, the planning commission could not meet on the 16th because of the Board of Supervisors obviously has a meeting on the 16th. And so they, and so then it has to be at least a week. And I think that's where we fell on the 24th. We certainly could do it on the 25th or another day even later. But I think that was the, that was the reason why it fell on the 24th.
Would y'all entertain 25th or 26th or 25th?
That has to be seven days, right?
Yes.
I can make 25th work if my colleagues are amenable to that as well.
Yeah, I can. I just can't make the 23rd, so.
Thank you for your consideration.
25th, 6 o'clock.
It's entirely up to you.
6 o'clock here? Okay, 25th, 6 o'clock here in the boardroom.
Mr. Chair, following up on the prorating proposed ordinance, I'd like to move to direct staff to contact the Commissioner of the Revenue and the Treasurer to see what dates they might be available for a work session to discuss the impacts that that would have on their office. I just want to make sure it doesn't drag on and then we don't get it, if we want to implement it, we don't get it done in time.
Sure, I'll second it.
Discussion. I just wanted to make sure if a part of the work session we could do the other thing I mentioned is, okay.
Sure. You can get with them for a work, work session date?
I'll let Ms. Lackey, I guess, kind of drive that in terms of when she's ready to have that released to y'all. And would you rather see it first and then hold the work session? Or would you rather have the, have it be presented to you all with the Treasurer and the Revenue Commission?
We've already seen the draft prorating ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, we'll get something set up then.
Thank you. Thank you. Is that all you have, Ms. Lackey?
Yes, but I believe we do need the vote formalized on the special meeting and the topic to be considered for that meeting.
You're speaking for the 25th, correct? All right, and for the topic?
The topic are the rezonings that are before the Planning Commission on the 17th. It would be the same items.
I move to track staff to advertise for a special meeting in the Board of Supervisors to be held on Thursday, August 25th at 6:00 PM in the boardroom for the purposes of reviewing or discussing zoning requests that are going before the Planning Commission on the 17th.
Second.
Motion properly seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, can I just clarify? Is it, my understanding, because I saw the advertisement in the Freelance Star yesterday, is that the meeting on the 17th with the Planning Commission is a public hearing. Am I correct? So, this is a public hearing that we're advertising? It's not, is this a discussion or is this a public hearing?
It would be a public hearing as well.
Okay.
I probably should make a motion to amend then. So, I'll make a motion to amend my motion to have an advertisement for a public hearing on the topics that were previously stated.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Lackey. Okay. Finish up with that, then we'll get on to our first public hearing. 0802, public hearing, proposed designation of a no-through truck route restriction on Route 206, Dogron Road between Route 3 and 301. Good evening.
I think we need to do, let me do an intro, I guess. So, this is something that you all had been discussing. You said the public hearing at the last board meeting for this subject, which is the 206, Route 206. And we have done a review to determine that there is an alternative to 206. So, that was one of the first steps that has to be conducted. You have to have a public hearing, and then you approve a resolution that goes with it. And then we would then submit that to the Commonwealth Transportation Commission, and they would take over from there. And would, assumingly, if everything was fine, they would designate the no-truck, no-through trucks on that route and post whatever signs have to be done. So.
Okay. Good evening, James Morris.
Hang on, Mr. Morris, can you just hang on for one second? Okay. All right, thanks, Mr. Miller. We can go on from here. Sorry, Mr. Morris. I will now open the floor up for a public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford and everyone to speak, opportunity to speak. If you wish to come up and speak, please state your name and address before starting, and you will have three minutes. Okay, Mr. Morris, thank you.
Okay. James Morris of 5403 Strawberry Lane. My wife and I support the proposed change to make Route 206, Dogron Road, no-through trucks. About two and a half years ago, I met with the VDOT Maintenance Supervisor for our area to discuss the large ditch that is very close to the edge of Dogron Road at Partridge Lake. This is just up from Peppermill Creek. He agreed with me that this was unsafe and needed work. He had his staff install the black and white signs to mark the edge of the roadway. During a recent check, I found at least six of these signs had been hit and are damaged. The location of the damage on the signs would indicate that the damage was caused by a large vehicle. During our meeting, the VDOT Maintenance Supervisor admitted to me that he does not drive Route 206 unless absolutely necessary because it's too dangerous. Let me repeat. A VDOT supervisor who has a roadway he is responsible for maintaining is saying it is too dangerous. The same supervisor told me he personally travels Route 3 to Route 205 to Route 301. He feels it is safer, and by his calculations, it is approximately the same time and distance. Traffic accidents are a routine occurrence on Dogron Road. I would bet everyone in this room can name at least three locations on Dogron Road where crashes occur on a regular basis. As a fire department safety officer for 15 years and a former emergency vehicle operator instructor, I cannot understand why any large vehicle operator would choose this road. The first step in making this dangerous road less dangerous is to prohibit through trucks. Crashes will continue to happen on Dogron Road, but do we really want an 80,000-pound truck or a 8,000-gallon gasoline tanker involved? As the risk management expert Gordon Graham preaches, if it's predictable, it is. It is preventable, it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Love, Ms. Strauss.
I'm Dee Strauss, 10362 Ridgeway Drive. I am concerned about the proposal to ban truck traffic on 206 Dogron Road. According to the Freelance Star article on Saturday, July 30th, truck traffic accounts for only 1% of the total traffic count as of 2020 on Route 206 Dogron Road. And this was stated by Kelly Hannan, spokesperson for the Virginia Department of Transportation. This ban would divert this additional traffic, even if only 1%, to use Route 3, King's Highway, through the Courthouse downtown area, right outside this building. I would like to offer this consideration. I attend church at St. John's and volunteer at the op shop in the downtown area every week. Traffic is already very busy on this two-lane stretch of Route 3, King's Highway. I would encourage this board to investigate and recommend that the speed limit be reduced to 25 mile per hour from King George Elementary School to King George High School, and that pedestrian crosswalks with signage and flashing lights be added to the two-lane area in one or possibly two additional places. There's already one at the op shop. But I can tell you that I have stood on the sidewalk trying to get to one side or the other, and no one has stopped. If you added another one at King's Automotive, and then if you were to add a second one, maybe at the Smoot Library, that would intentionally slow traffic. And as Christine, as Carly Mason has put up in her yard, 35 miles per hour is the speed limit on this road currently. So, she's trying to advocate for people to slow down. Whatever we can do, if the trucks are going to come through or whether they're not going to come through, we need to slow the traffic down in this downtown area and add additional recognizable crosswalks. And if we have to educate the public about what a crosswalk, pedestrian crosswalk is, and that you are to stop, then I'm sure the sheriff's office would be more than happy to have a deputy sit out there. The slower speed in crosswalks in our downtown area would put in place additional safety measures for drivers and pedestrians. Thank you for your time this evening.
Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Heilman. I live at 6742 Blackburn Run, which is directly on Route 206 at the top of Peppermill Hill. I have lived in the county since August of 2007 and have seen an exponential growth in both the frequency of the large trucks. Last night coming home at 2:30 in the morning, there was a gas truck coming down the road. There's constantly large vehicles, flammable vehicles. And it is, there's nothing along that road other than residences. It is a primary thoroughfare for our buses in the morning. And in fact, when my son was in kindergarten, I witnessed a box truck that did not anticipate a bus on the road. And as my son was getting off and would have needed to cross the road over to Blackburn Run, the bus veered around the bus, I'm sorry, the truck veered around the bus. And luckily, normally that's high-traffic time coming from Dogron. Luckily, nobody happened to be coming up the hill in that moment, but went around that corner. And then, as the gentleman mentioned, there's a very large ditch to the right. There is also no sidewalks or anything for pedestrians. Frequently, I will see somebody who obviously is not from the county walking down that road. And it's just, the visibility is very poor. We just built a house next door to Blackburn Run, and there's less than 40-foot visibility. I've contacted VDOT on several occasions. I did also ask for a traffic study be done because of the changes that have taken place along that road over the years. I've heard rumors that perhaps a traffic circle would be put in over where the, can't think of it right now, where the little store is. So, I highly, highly recommend that these issues be looked at and taken seriously and action be taken sooner than later. I hear every single ambulance going by. I hear all of the crashes. Usually, it takes place, you know, along, between my house and Owen's Boulevard. So, I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. Heilman. Anyone else? Seeing none, Mr. Dines, anyone online for public comment? Did anybody receive any written statements, public comment?
Nope.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, so before we bring it back to the board, can I ask?
Let me just close up public comments, so we can close public comment now?
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Collins?
So, I'm in agreement of this resolution, but I do have question as far as, in the resolution, it talks about trucks. Now, are we talking about commercial motor vehicle, 26,001 pounds? Or are we talking about, what, could that be enumerated a little bit more?
I haven't, I haven't answered.
What kind of truck is allowed? Thank you.
Just let me just find the email for you, Mr. Collins, and I will, I'll read exactly what Mr. Beal sent to me.
Is it in regards to the Transportation Board and all that? Or is it regard to what type of trucks?
It clearly states in state law, in code, exactly what the truck is. I can't find it right now. But I asked that same question, and I was talking to Sheriff Giles about it. And I forwarded that out on to Mr. Beal, and he sent me the exact law that told what trucks it was. As soon as I find that, I will send it to you. All right, Mr. Collins, exactly what it is is 462809, Regulation of Truck Traffic on Primary and Secondary Highways. And it says such restrictions may apply to any truck or truck and trailer or semi-trailer combination except for a pickup or panel truck.
Thank you. Note that there's no gross vehicle weight rating on that. So, that's what he returned to you?
That's what he had sent for, he said that's the VA code that they have to deal with when they talk about regulation of traffic on primary and secondary highways. And it does, truck meaning every motor vehicle, transportation property, excess of 7,500 pounds, but does not include pickups or panel trucks.
Okay, so it does have a 7,500?
Yeah, like I said, it's 462809.
Okay. The other thing is, is that this is coming in front of us for a public hearing, and Ms. Strauss brought up a point about Route 3. And I know that this board has talked about a bypass for the Courthouse area. So, I don't know if that could be for a further discussion with Mr. Beal or how that would work.
Mr. Chair, I have several questions. One being the enforcement mechanism for this. I would like some more clarification on the enforcement mechanism. And if it is the sheriff, what's the cost for the county? Do we have to have a sheriff's deputy at each end? I mean, that, and my other concern being a lot of the traffic would be diverted through the Shiloh District going 3 and down 205. I do have concerns about accidents happening, especially Indian Town where we already have issues. You're going to bring a lot of truck traffic. We do have businesses that are close to the road. People do cross the street. Our own employees from this building have trouble getting out of this, both entrances, about 4:00, 4:30. So, my concern- So my concern is we might need a little more study in that to understand the, I know I hate the word study, but I, I do have some concerns about diverting the traffic onto roads that might be not ready for it.
Mr. Chairman?
It's Collins.
So going on to Route 3, so if, how many residential homes are on Route 3 and how many are on 206? I would think that the difference is, is pretty grand and the subdivisions that go off of Route 206. So I would, I would be more inclined to put them through King George, but I would like to see a future plan of a bypass. Anyhow.
Mr. Chair, there's, there's one other concern, especially on 205, and I travel that every day numerous times. And there are, there is a trailer park with two entrances and there is a lot of accidents that happen at those two entrances. So you're adding more trucks that are going past there at a certain rate of speed. They don't stop very quickly. That's just my concern.
I think, Mr. Miller, you were, we were saying that, that VDOT was going to come up with either to go down 205 or go up to 3 and go that way, correct? Didn't you say that in their part of it, they're going to do a study?
No, I, I think that I was making, you know, the statement that if they don't go down 206, then what's, you know, the alternative is 218 or the alternative would be 205 or go all the way from 301 to the intersection with 3. And so I guess would, you know, the concern would be like Ms. Bender saying, I guess, what, what, what needs to be looked at at 205? I mean, cause I think that could be a, a concern because of the school and because of the trailer park there and Sedell Brooks, but.
And the landfill. Or not the landfill, the convenience center.
Right. But I, you know, I think that what they asked of us is that we are to provide proof that we have an alternative to 206. The alternative is Route 301 and Route 3. And that would be for any other road that's going to do that, you would, you would just, that would be your alternative. And that's what Ms. Lackey had identified as the critical factor in you getting anywhere with the Transportation Commission.
I was just hoping that, you know, like, like I said, years ago, when I first came here, there were signs there and they had no, no through trucks. And, I mean, you know, if you sit right there, the, the tractor trailers that you see, Sheetz tanker trucks going from Sheetz to Sheetz, sounds like a race. But anyways, so the tanker trucks that do that, the trash trucks coming through, coming off across the bridge and going through 206. And, you know, hopefully if, you know, if the, if there is a resolution and VDOT agrees and, and they do post it, you know, it'll stop those trucks. They're the ones that are primarily using it as a cut through, you know, from, from the bridge to Route 3 towards Fredericksburg. You know, those are the ones that are in primary. I mean, you sit there and you can watch them, they're just, they're the McLean trucks or Sheetz trucks. There's trash trucks. Those are the, the violators you see, or not violators, but there are, those are the ones that you see most of the time and they're just using it as a shortcut. And, you know, I, I brought this to you all because, I mean, I, I've been here 20 years of hearing people along Dahlgren Road saying, hey, please, you know, stop and see what you can do to stop the tractor trailers. That was the biggest complaint about using it as a shortcut. You know, obviously it's not going to affect the, the, you know, the local folks that live on the road that have tractor trailers, which are a number of them. It's not going to affect any of our, our contractors or anything that are there, local on the road that they have to come and go. This is basically just to stop the, the cutting through of that road as opposed to going up the other way. I mean, granted, 205 is not the greatest road. I mean, it's a small, skinny road and then coming right through here, but it's, it's straight. It's not windy, you know, it's not, you know, congested with lots of houses and stuff. So, I mean, it was, you know, it was not my idea to bring it forward. It just, I had a lot of people over 20 years saying, please, is there anything that we can do about it? So that's why we brought it up.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Collins?
So that, that does go through a big swath of my district. And there's a lot of subdivisions on it, like I said earlier. And it would, if you can't get on 206th and they can't go down 218 unless they're coming from Stafford, I don't know how that would be handled once they got to the, to the 206 cross there. But they couldn't come one direction from the bridge. But for my constituents on all those roads and traveling also, I would, I would prefer putting the traffic in this area where there'd be less residential affected. Thank you.
Anyone else?
So I, I can see Ms. Bender's point. Maybe it would have been helpful to have the sheriff here tonight, but obviously he had a conflict. He had an event he's hosting at the high school and we understand that. I, I agree with Mr. Collins though, because those are my constituents too. And so I would be willing to move forward with, with this tonight and then looking at 218 in the future, as Mr. Granger suggested. And I also want to point out, I guess maybe I'm kind of just going to go ahead and ask for consensus of the board. VDOT has a program that's called, a grant program called Safe Routes to School. And it just opened up again a week or so ago for the next grant cycle. They have something that's called a walkabout mini-grant. And it closes this school year September 29th, 2022, and March 2nd, 2023. So how this works is you get a walkabout mini-grant because under the, which is like a study. They do a study of the school. And for safe routes to school, it provides grant funding. I can't remember the percentage. There is a local match, but it's a good chunk of state funding for any K through 8 school. So if we did this in two chunks and it's for, it's like a certain distance from the school too, I did the measurements a while back, we could do one of these for King George Elementary School or coming down 205 and along Route 3. And then a year or two later, do another one for King George Middle School because that's a K through 8 school, coming down 206 in the other direction, Route 3, and start working on crosswalks like Ms. Strauss suggested. And I have something more about that, but, or, or sidewalks or bike paths or whatever to get kids to school safely. So I just would ask, if we're having this conversation about that, would there be consensus to have staff look at this walkabout mini-grant to start the process of seeing if it would qualify for grant funding? Okay, and then with regard to, and, and thanks to everyone who came out for the public hearing, Ms. Strauss, you mentioned something very specific about crosswalks. And that crosswalk you're talking about in front of the op shop actually just got improvements because I reached out to VDOT about that. And they, they said, I got copied on the memo, that they evaluated the existing signage and posting speed limit is 35, noted that the advanced pedestrian sign was outdated and there are no pedestrian crossing signs at the crosswalk. So they went ahead and they upgraded the signage to current standards and installed supplemental signage. I asked for those little flashy beacon things that you want and I was told that that wasn't warranted unless we want to fund it. VDOT is not, they said they would pay for the signs, they would make the signs, they would pay for the installation, but unless we want to pursue coming up with the flashing beacons. So maybe that's a conversation we can have another time if that's something we're interested in. But I think, I suspect that if we get this safe routes to school thing rolling, we may be able to get some state funding to help with, with some of the things that have come up today on Route 3. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, just one more thing, just to tell Ms. Bender. So the, the enforcement action can be, if it's a sign that says no through trucks, it can be enforced under the state code. I believe it's 462-830 failed to be a highway sign. And it would, it would take a little bit of effort to, to enforce it. In other words, you have to follow the vehicle from point A to point B. But they, Sheriff's Deputy State Police, they're trained to, you know, enforce the law. So I don't think that would be a, a huge problem. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I, I would like to entertain also with it, if the vote goes the way I think it's going to go, but to entertain Ms. Strauss's idea of lowering the speed limit to 25 through here, because that would at least give a little more time for reactions and especially understanding that, especially the intersection where Indian Town is, is an accident hotspot.
Ms. Granger?
Yes, so I did reach out to Mr. Beal about that based off Ms. Strauss's, she sent me an email in regards to that. I also have the information about the signage, but I also asked about lowering the speed limit. Mr. Beal said it would probably not be likely, there'd have to be some data that would show that it would need it to be, which I imagine would require a study where they would analyze and see based off the current traffic flows and the safety that's currently in place on, on, you know, what's going on with that. So I guess it's a possibility. It didn't sound like it was very likely, but he did also bring up the fact that is if you artificially set limits lower than what is actually safe, it can end up actually increasing the hazards. So it's just something to be aware of. If you, if you put it too low, sometimes that, that's going to be a psychological problem, I guess, for, for some drivers and they might just ignore it and then blow through even more, I guess is what it is. But we can, I'm not going to make a motion, but I maybe ask my colleagues if they'd be maybe willing to entertain, if I reach out to Mr. Beal and to share with you his response in regards to maybe asking about maybe having a study done on that road. And then I'll send that information to you guys if, if you're amenable to all that. Not committing anyone to anything, just asking them if it's possible and what it would take.
I don't have a problem with that, but I know the Route 3 corridor study was just done in 2016. So they are probably going to come back to us and say, King George County, you can pay for it.
Yep. I, I imagine that will probably be the answer, but I figure it doesn't least hurt to ask them and see what their answer is, so.
That seems to be the answer. They give us a lot.
Mr. Chairman, I also would just add that I would think that if you wanted to do this, you would probably have to have a, a motion of the board to, they would probably want something official and maybe even like in the form of a resolution that they would want if you wanted to ask for a, a study on to, on Route 3.
Yeah, I'm tracking. I'm not looking to make the motion. I would ask them what, what the, because as Ms. Cupica brought up, it was done not too long ago and I mentioned they probably would ask us to put the bill. So just to better understand it, I'll share with my colleagues once I reach, receive information from them and let you guys know.
Ms. Bender, just I was going to relay a conversation I have with Sheriff Giles that, I guess it was the end of last week, where he said that, you know, he was in support of it and his deputies would, you know, definitely enforce a no through truck corridor on that road. You know, it is, it is very difficult to do any type of traffic stop on that road. I mean, they may have to follow a truck from one end all the way to the other end to do it because of, you know, it's just a two lane residential road. But he said that his deputies would definitely do that. And then I think signage and, you know, contacting Sheetz and McLean and, you know, the trash companies and say, hey, folks, you know, this is, it's a no through truck now. You know, hopefully their, their professional drivers would go somewhere else. I mean, so the enforcement effort of it.
Mr. Chair, I understand and I understand the concern. I, I, my concern goes back to where we're rerouting all the trucks, especially 205. There's a lot of things on there, including the school, the trailer parks, the convenience center and Sedell Brooks Junior Park.
Thank you. Anything else? All right.
I move to adopt the resolution of a through traffic restriction on Route 206 Dahlgren Road, subject to Commonwealth Transportation Board approval as presented.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any ayes?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Thank you. The King George Board of Supervisors will now hold a public meeting that has been properly advertised to receive public input regarding proposed amendments to the FY 2022, 2023 county budget. I will first ask for the staff report, then I will open the floor to public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per speaker in order everyone to, afford everyone an opportunity to speak. If you do come up, please state your name and address before you comment. Upon completion of public comment, I will bring the matter back to the board for consideration. The board may or may not take action tonight depending on information received during public comment. Mrs. Hahn?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We have scheduled a public hearing tonight to discuss the proposed coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, also known as the American Rescue Plan, funds that were allocated for King George County. This was signed into law on March 11th of 2021 by President Biden. The allocation for the county of King George was a total of $5,212,578. Fifty percent of that was received in fiscal year 2021, 2022 in the amount of $2,606,289. We have currently received our second allotment in the same amount of $2,606,289 that is currently, has come into the county and we need to accept that funds and we can use that towards our operating budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023. There are specific guidelines as to how the funds are, may be used and staff recommends that going forward, the Board of Supervisors schedule a work session in tandem with the CIP work sessions to discuss the use of these funds. After the public hearing, we are recommending that the board authorize the county administrator to accept the additional funds and to authorize their expenditure consistent with the provisions of the amendment and to adopt the attached resolution that was in your board packet to amend the fiscal year 2022, 2023 operating budget to accept the CSLRFR funds in the
Thank you, Mrs. Hahn. I'll now open the floor up to public comment. Anyone here for public comment for this public hearing? Seeing none, Mr. Dines, anyone online? Colleagues, anybody received any written statements? Nope. Okay. I will close public comment. And I will bring the board, the matter back to the board.
I move to authorize county administrator accept the additional funds and to authorize their expenditure consistent with the provisions of the amendment and to adopt the resolution to amend the FY 2022, 2023 operating budget to appropriate the CSLRFR funds in the amount of $2,606,289 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Then presentations and reports, I don't see any. And moving on to action items, 0804 Department of Finance amend and appropriate, appropriate FY 2022, 2023 operating budget for additional state funding for the library. This is Hahn. state funding for the library. Mrs. Hahn again.
Good evening. Once again, during budgets generation time, the library has given an estimated amount of funds that they will receive from the state. The library director has now received notice from the Library of Virginia that the approved state budget for library books was $176,087. This is 21,752 over the estimated amount of 154,335. At this time, we ask that you authorize the county administrator to amend the fiscal year 2022-2023 for the additional $21,752 state library funding and to appropriate the funds.
So moved.
Second.
Motion properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 0805, Department of Finance authorized to enter into an agreement to purchase the replacement of the much-needed AC unit for the Rivercombe Building and updated controls.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm here before you this evening to request authorization to enter into an agreement to purchase the replacement AC unit for the Rivercombe Building and updated controls. The AC unit serving the second floor of the Rivercombe Building has underperformed several times for several summers. The maintenance perform provides a very temporary solution that doesn't last very long. A long-term solution would be to replace the unit. Staff determine the best method for this procurement is through cooperative purchasing using the Omnia Cooperative Contract Number 15 JLP023 with Train. Attached is a proposal outlining the scope of this project. Funding for this project is requested to be transferred from ARPA funds. This was included in the FY 2022-23 CIP, but staff would like to move forward with the project due to the number of days that staff have been impacted by the underperformance of the original unit. And so with that, I would request that you authorize the county administrator to transfer $237,500 from the ARPA projects line to a project line to be generated for the HVAC replacement, and then to authorize the county administrator to execute an agreement with Train for the purchase and installation of a replacement 25-ton condensing unit, an interior AHU cooling coil, two VFDs, variable frequency drives, to supply and return fan and updated controls in the amount of $237,500, subject to approval as deformed by the county attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Motion properly seconded. Any discussion?
In the CIP, it's 260, so it's under that amount.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, so I'm glad this is coming forward, Mr. Miller and Ms. Hahn and Ms. Pitts, because this has been going on since I worked upstairs on staff in 2017 and 2018. I can remember having to come down here, bring my laptop to work in the boardroom because it was cool enough to work down here and it just is not upstairs. So I just want to thank staff for getting this addressed. Thank you very much.
All right. We have a motion properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Pitts. Moving on to 0806, Department of Finance, transfer of funds for the Parks and Rec Activity Fund to the project construction line for the Sedell Brooks Jr. Park Pavilion, Park Picnic Pavilion Project.
Okay, lastly, last item for me. So this is in reference to the transfer of funds from the Parks and Recreation Activity Fund to the project construction line for the Sedell Brooks Jr. Park Picnic Pavilion Project. The change order for this project requiring additional, additional funding was presented before the board on July 19th, and it was approved. However, the transfer of funds is needed as a separate action. So with that, I would recommend that you authorize the county administrator to transfer $14,500 from the Parks and Rec Activity Fund to the project construction line.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Pitts.
Thanks very much.
Okay, done. Action items, discussion items, seeing none. County administrators' report. I'm sorry, we jumped, we, Mr. Clark, I apologize.
That has happened to me in this room before, so.
I just crossed you right off and moved along. I know. And Mr. Lynch, sorry, guys. Okay. 0807, Department of Parks and Recreation, resolution for the support for the acquisition of the Dahlgren Heritage Railroad Trail by the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation. Take it away, Mr. Clark.
As I mentioned in my departmental report, we have a board of supervisors meeting on July 19th, 2022, the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation is currently conducting a suitability study, as required by the new Commonwealth budget, on the suitability of DCR acquiring the Dahlgren Railroad Heritage Trail and making it a part of Caledon State Park. In February 2016, the King George County Board of Supervisors passed a resolution in support of this. Since that time, we've turned over four of the five seats and DCR has requested that I present the resolution to you again so that we have a current support that we hope. So taking that, I will read the resolution. A resolution of the Board of Supervisors of King George County, Virginia, in support of the Dahlgren Railroad Heritage Trail and its incorporation into Caledon State Park by the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation. Whereas King George County is home to Caledon State Park, one of the Commonwealth, one of the Commonwealth of Virginia's premier recreation facilities located along the southern shore of the Potomac River, and whereas the Dahlgren Railroad Heritage Trail comprises part of a former railroad line built in 1942 and running from Fredericksburg, Virginia, to the Dahlgren Naval Facility campus that transported naval munitions and thousands of Department of Defense employees for decades, playing an important role in United States military research and development efforts during those years. And whereas the Dahlgren Railroad Heritage Trail's railroad from Sealston in King George to the Dahlgren Naval Facility has been out of use for many years, and the infrastructure has been mostly removed, leaving an open trail stretching across the entirety of King George County with portions lying very close to Caledon State Park. And whereas the Dahlgren Railroad Heritage Trail has been developed and utilized as a recreation trail for walking, jogging, hiking, biking, cross-country skiing, and horseback riding to the enjoyment and satisfaction of thousands of King George County citizens and visitors, and it is desirous that such use flourishes. And whereas the Commonwealth's Department of Conservation and Recreation is presently working on a suitability study in regards to the Dahlgren Railroad Heritage Trail and its incorporation into Caledon State Park to enhance park facilities, the trail, and recreational opportunities for visitors, now therefore be it resolved by virtue of this resolution that the Board of Supervisors of King George County, Virginia hereby expresses its full and enthusiastic support of the efforts of the Department of Conservation and Recreation toward the acquisition of all interests in Dahlgren Railroad Heritage Trail properties necessary to facilitate its incorporation into Caledon State Park for further enjoyment of the citizens of King George County and visitors to Caledon State Park.
I'll move to adopt the resolution as presented.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes.
On behalf of the friends of the trail and trail ownership and the Department of Parks and Recreation, we thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Now, we will move on to discussion items, seeing none, and Mr. Miller and the county administrators' report.
Okay, so I know Mr. Collins had asked about the to-do list. So I have provided you all with some minutes from January and February of 2019 where the school board members were asking Dr. Benson kind of information and he was reporting on the to-do list. I guess I just need some clarification. We went and did a search and there's, Ms. Smith upstairs indicated that there's nothing on the agendas anymore where it lists the to-dos. It was something that they were doing. And I guess I just wanted to clarify, I can, we can arrange to have major projects and major program updates, information about hirings and things like that. I can have that as either a part of the county administrators' report, or if you want it, I think somebody had said at the last meeting, it could be listed at the end, kind of like the, the department reports. I'm happy to do that. It appears that what was happening was it became kind of a discussion items, and it's not just a listing of, of activities. And I guess I just want to clarify, what would you, what would you all want?
Mr. Chair, may I? So I get that staff looked on the school board website, but did anybody just pick up the phone and call school board administration?
We asked them for information and we didn't get anything back.
And say, do you have an actual to-do list?
It's my understanding that Ms. Smith reached out to them and we didn't hear anything until, I don't even know if she had a conversation, because their offices were, they just didn't respond to us. So I'm happy to.
I can, I can call Ms. Inseth. She was the chair when this was first instituted that year. I'll call her tomorrow and say, hey, Tammy, do you have a, a template of what this looked like when you all did this?
Sure. I just, I guess I just want to make sure that I'm getting what you need. Because it obviously, they, they would discuss items. In the, when we talked last, it was kind of stated, well, it could just be put at the end of the agenda as like a presentation. And it wasn't that there would be any discussion, because that's, I just want clarification from the board. What are you looking for? If it's a status report, those kind of things, I'm happy to do that. I just didn't, I just have a different, I, I guess I get, in my mind, I had a different idea of what, what we're doing. And, and I guess I just want to make sure that I, when we do this, and it'll be available at the next meeting. I, I, you know, I'm not, you know, it'd be no problem. I just want to make sure that what I'm doing is what you're looking for.
Mr. Chair, let me ask a question. And Mr. Collins, you brought it up. You were on the board at that time. What was on the to-do, to-do list?
There were, basically it gave statuses or like something that was in discussion and said it would be in, it's in discussion, or it might say pending contract, or it might, it would bring up things that individual members wanted to put on the to-do list. As a group, they would say, okay, let's put that on the do list. It could be many things. So it's, it's, it's basically a Excel spreadsheet. It's, it's only one page. It's, it helps, it also helps the county residents understand what's going on and what's, where's everything at. So I used to have that to-do list, but I purged all my files.
I got it. March 25th, 2019, I'm sorry, March 25th, yeah, March 3/25/19, regular meeting agenda packet, page 41. King George 2019, King George County, this is it, right? Yep. King George County School Board to-do list.
Okay.
Yep.
I mean, Mr. Collins, I mean, can you give, can you remember back and give any specific items that, okay, they're all right there.
Well, I think that what I would want clarification on though, is if I list projects, clearly I'll, you know, we're going to provide information on those projects if you need that. But if there's something, I think Mr. Collins just said that board members can add to it, I, I would want to request that that come through the chair of the board.
Through the consensus of the board.
Yes. Okay. I just want to make sure that I'm not, you know, having 20 different items added to every night.
Mr. Miller, can you look into lowering the speed limit through, I'm sorry, can you look at the speed limit, lowering it through the courthouse to 25? That would, if everybody agreed, then it would go on the to-do list and then you would look into it and then you would say, looked into it, can't happen. And that gets canceled off the do list.
Okay. And I, again, I apologize if you were expecting that it would be ready to go. I just wanted to get everything clear so that when you, when we have it and it'll be available, do you want it as part of every meeting or would you like it as part of like the second meeting of the month or the first meeting of the month?
Well, the, the purpose of it was for every meeting, you can put it in the discussion items. And so you, you know, when it comes up and if there's any discussion on it, there is, if there isn't, there isn't. It's, it's not that big a deal. It's not that big of a project.
That's fine. I just, I just wanted to get it clear so that we give you what you're looking for.
May I add something with regard to the, what Mr. Collins just said? So the best practice, I guess, that the school board implemented when they did this was they put it on the agenda like Mr. Collins stated, and then in parentheses, they put five minutes. That means we're taking five minutes to update this, but we're not having a huge discussion and that way the chair can manage the agenda and yeah, so.
I mean, do we want to have him just report to us on, say, the first, so then we can have action on the second meeting?
So it'll be on, it'll be on the first meeting and then there'll be, if you have an action, it would come on the second meeting? Is that what you're saying?
It wasn't really for action. It was more for just to keep track of things. So it could be every meeting. Just keep track of, it's not, it's not that tough.
I see a lot of those. I imagine if something were to change on it, maybe highlight it just so that's like, hey, this, it's something that's changed and, and we have new data about it and some might not get done like, I get that.
It's an informational item. I just, you know, again, I just, we just want to make sure from a staff standpoint that we're meeting your needs. We don't want to have a waste of time for you. And I get what they're doing, but, and how they handled it, but I just, you know, I don't want to have something that's not meeting your needs.
I kind of imagine as Mr. Collins's example with like the 301 or the Route 3, lowering the speed limit. Maybe you'd have that on there, the date it was added, like, and then, you know, outcome or, or information or, or update. And then, you know, if there's nothing there, then we know we haven't gotten to it, but we also know when it was originally added. And so, hey, what's happening? Why aren't we getting to that? There certainly could be a good reason why sometimes things take longer than others. But yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking.
Thank you. Sounds good. Next item is proposed Board of Supervisor CIP review dates. First of all, at your desk, there is a copy of the CIP that, that was presented to the Planning Commission. Please note that the Planning Commission on the 9th will meet and, and provide their rankings for the CIP. And what we are proposing is a pretty accelerated schedule because I think our goal would be that these are approved the first meeting in September or the last meeting in September, which would be the 20th. So we are asking you, and it looks like we already lost the 25th, but the 18th, which is a, these are Thursdays, with the exception of the 31st, I guess is a Wednesday, so we can change that for Mr. Collins. But we will present it to you. What we may do is present it at the next board meeting, correct, as informational item. If the board, if the planning commission gets it ranked, then we could present that information. Not for discussion, but just as an informational handout. Then what we'll do is schedule in according to your time commitments, the first review by the, of the department proposals. The CIP obviously flows a little quicker than the regular budget, but we are certainly wanting to accelerate that this year because I think that we did it in November and that, that process kind of compromised some things. So.
Would we want to look to tonight, making a commitment to August 18th? Because I-
That, that would be our recommendation, yes.
Yeah. We couldn't wait to the 16th to make that decision. Otherwise, it's too late.
No. I was proposing that we would hand it out to you and you would see their rankings the 9th.
On the 16th.
Yes.
But then.
Informational only, and then you would have it on the 18th to get in, to dive into.
Is everyone available, do you think? I am.
So on that schedule, can we just change the 31st to the first Wednesday again?
I'm amenable to that if everyone else is.
I agree also, the 18th, what time and how long is the worship session going to be?
The earliest I can be here on the 18th is 6:30. I can make 6:30, but I have two commitments right before that.
I, the next day I have to be in Charlottesville for another wrap meeting, so.
We could make it an hour, hour and a half, whatever you want to do. 30 minutes. I mean, I, I think the main thing is, is we want you to take the time or have the time to vet the CIP projects.
Hahn, does Ms. Hahn have something she wants to?
Well, if we have to break it up, then we would have to come back another meeting if Ms. Bender has an issue with time.
I just, I'm going to have to get up early on the 18th, so I would throw a red flag up on the 18th. So I would throw a red flag up on the 18th.
Anybody do Mondays?
I'm going to do it every day except.
Every day, but, but Wednesday.
I don't have a problem with Monday.
I have conflicts on the third Monday for DSS board meeting. And the fourth Mondays, Ms. Bender and I have GWRC in Fredericksburg.
Mr. Chair, I know, I've mentioned this to Mr. Miller before, but especially during our budget work sessions, we kind of had too many of those. And is there a possibility of maybe to be a more expedited process to do it in an all-day session? With lunch providers, something like that could go. I was going to bring this up when we talked about our budget for next year, but this also, CIP process could be a lengthy one is maybe do it all in one day.
So how about the folks at work? That would probably be problematic.
I'm just throwing it out there because 14 is too much. About for the budget. I'm just trying to also help our staff to make it all.
You don't want them here on Saturday or Sunday.
See, I'd be willing to come on that day. I know nobody else would, but I would be here.
Sunday's church day for me.
I know it is difficult for those that have day chime jobs. I'm just throwing in my.
So every Wednesday, you're not available?
Yes, unfortunately. So the Bible study only has like, um, a one-week break and then it starts another one.
Monday, what Mondays do you guys in GWRC?
The third and the fourth, yeah.
It'd have to be the areas, but we already have the 25th up there, so.
Mr. Chair, can I make a suggestion? Is there any reason staff couldn't send out a doodle poll? For us to doodle poll? So there's an app or website, you can do an app on the phone or a website. It's doodle, D-O-O-D-L-E, doodle.com. A doodle poll.
Mr. Dunn's going to flag it?
And. Yeah. Straight to spam. And so staff would, so Mr. Miller would get with Ms. Hahn and their staff to figure out the days staff are available to set up the selection that we can choose from. Then they email a link to us and we look at the calendar and we pick out of all the ones that they're offering, which ones were available.
True.
And then we aren't doing this during a meeting, trying to figure out. I will be happy to help you Supervisor Collins. I just learned how to do these doodle polls myself.
What if we don't, just accuracy? Let's pretend we get a situation where we don't have all five are available on any of the days?
You could take the, whatever day the majority is available, yeah.
With that, I'm just, I'm just asking.
That's kind of, yeah, how these work.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'll have to explain it to my wife first before I enter this doodle poll.
We will, uh, we will do that.
Okay.
And we'll hopefully get a consensus. We'll try to get that resolved in the coming weeks so that we can get a consensus on a meeting in, um, early, early part before the month is out. So Ms. Hahn and I are going to be sitting down with Kyle from Davenport to discuss our long-term financing discussions with the courthouse and the public safety radio system, the timing. There's some options there and we will be bringing them back to you. But, um, obviously with the courthouse being approved, we are, um, moving forward on that. Public radio system is requiring a, um, one approval on that. And then we'll have that ready to go, um, so that we can keep those projects moving. Uh, I will tell you this, that the notice to proceed, barring everything is good on the contract documents for the courthouse will be issued on the eighth, which is Monday. And I think you remember the calendar and the, the schedule that they had. But, um, very exciting project and we're ready to certainly keep that moving, so. That's it.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Miller on his report? Seeing none.
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting for discussion and consideration of the performance and salary of the King County Administrator pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1. And if needed, for consultation with legal counsel about specific legal matters, namely provisions of the employment contract of the county administrator pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.23711A8. I invite the county administrator and county attorney as needed because they are deemed necessary and/or their presence will reasonably aid the border, board in its consideration of topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712F.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sir, votes aye. We are in closed session.
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by a vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed or considered during the closed meeting.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. So certify please.
So certify.
So certify.
So certify.
So certify.
Chair, so certifies, we are back in session?
I move to adjourn until Tuesday, August 16th at 6:30 PM in the boardroom.
Second.
You have a motion properly seconded? Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are adjourned.